I just logged on through your invite. That you sent me late this afternoon.
Hello.
Elise is back.
Just couldn't stay away. How's it going, Steve?
Ah, we miss you.
Aw, shucks. I miss you guys, too. I just don't miss the meetings.
Yeah, I hear you. It's not, it's not the same on Zoom.
No, no, I know. Well, we were on Zoom when I was towards the end of my service.
Tenure.
Tenure. Thank you, Pam.
Well, we're still on Zoom and it's just, it's a little more impersonal and it's just hard to
Yeah.
address everybody.
I, I was finding it really hard to focus towards the end of a five-hour meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Pam is in charge of that. She's keeping us on the straight and narrow.
All right.
She said no more late meetings.
Excellent.
So yeah, if I turn off my screen, it's because I just can't. I've been online since eight o'clock this morning, so my eyes are a little dry.
Jay, are we ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is South Kingston Planning Board. This is a work session. This is Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. First item on our agenda is roll call. Pam, can you please take role?
Yes, indeed. Joe Murphy.
Here.
Peter Di Stefano.
Here.
Marion Mack.
Here.
Steve Demossi.
Here.
Brian, Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Pam Rubenoff, here. And then we have our staff. Jamie Rabbit.
President.
Jay Parker.
Here.
Brian Wagner.
Here.
And Amy Guine, Special Legal Counsel.
I'm here as well.
Okay, thank you, Pam. First item on our work session is discussion of the proposed amendment, excuse me, zoning ordinance 502.7, creating cottage, cottage communities. Jamie, before we start, can you just briefly summarize what we accomplished at our last meeting? In case anybody wasn't present and they're looking, I noticed the, that draft ordinance wasn't updated. We had reduced the number of units per acre.
Yes, so, Miss, again, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. So based on conversations at your 114, 2021 meeting, there was consensus of the board members to reduce the density to eight units per acre with the incentive zoning would bring that to 10. So there would be no more than 10 units an acre on any proposed cottage development. We did not modify the regulations. Again, we're trying to do a wholesale change once the board solidifies everything associated with that. The primary discussion with that regulation is the reg calls out the future service district as the boundaries for a cottage development. The board asked us to prepare some information for your dissemination and discussion with regards to those boundaries. So Jay Parker put together some maps for you that were sent this month, which showed you the limits of that future service district area. Also in that, we did an overlay of all the zoning districts, so you could kind of click them on and off. I have the ability, as well as Jay tonight, to show you what some of those areas look like. Again, for discussion purposes, so the board members are clear. We've already anticipated that you're clicking off the, you know, R200, the R, any R200, and there was, is one in Kingston by the Amtrak station. The R80, the R40, I think R30 and R20 are up for discussion. We've eliminated open space zoned lots as well as government and institutional lots. So as you pare down those zoning classifications, the area within the future service gets a lot smaller. So I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that shows some of that, and then Jay can pull up that map and in essence be interactive in the discussion with that GIS information.
Okay.
So Jade, do I have share screen ability right now, since you're the host? You have to give that back to me.
No, you should be able. Do you see the green button at the bottom?
Yeah.
If you have, if you see that, you should be able to share your screen.
Can the board members see that right now?
Yes, Chairman.
All right, so just, just a reminder of where we are, because I think last month when we were talking about this, there was a lot of focus on the density and form of the cottage cluster, the cottage court development. But remember that this is part of the discussion of the missing middle. So in the context of cottages, the next phase is, in essence, this is a diagram that shows you, you know, what the missing middle discussion is. And, you know, we're still talking about duplexes and triplexes, fourplexes. This is from Cal.
Looks like we lost.
We lost, Jamie.
You didn't have to punch, Jay.
Yeah, he prepared this with this one. While he's, maybe what we should do is while he's trying to get back on, I did receive, oh, he just, he just indicated he's got to reboot his computer. I did receive one response from a planning board member. Does anyone, anybody have any? Oh, you're back. He's back.
You're muted.
You're muted, Jamie.
Am I still on share screen, Jay?
No, lost.
No.
Sorry, I got a Is that better for everyone?
Yep, you're back.
Okay, sorry about that. I got a low battery message and immediately my computer turned off before I could plug in. So again, last month, we had a discussion with the board members about kind of the missing middle, and I don't want you to lose context in the discussion that the cottage regulations is one type of housing that the board is exploring on the missing middle. So working with Orsley, Wetten and Union Studios, we're in the process of developing forms and architecture for duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhouse, and into the multiplex condo. This slide is from a presentation done in the city of Milwaukee from a California-based consulting firm. So you'll see the terms bungalow and courtyard apartments, and those are interchangeable with the cottage court. So again, on the bottom of this slide, you'll see the cottage, which is, you know, very typical of the style of smaller homes in Wakedale, excuse me, Peace Hill and Wakefield, and then the discussion of duplex, multiplex, townhouse, and live work. Those are subjects of discussions coming up in the very near future. These are a takeoff from a same cluster housing feasibility and AUD study done in the city of Milwaukee. Reminder that each parcel of land, this is kind of a sketch of an R20 lot. Once you take out front yards setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, there's only a certain amount of land left in a single-family home, even in an R10 setting, with those setbacks takes up a considerable amount of land, given those setbacks. Just a brief discussion, because you're really here talking about this style adult development for infill as it relates to affordability. A typical single-family home in South Kingston is in excess of $600,000. They're in the neighborhood of 25, 26 to 3,000 square feet. They're typically four bedrooms, two and a half baths, and they average over $239, $229 a square foot. As it relates to this, this kind of gives you an impact of affordability, that single-family home. And again, this is comparable to prices in the Midwest. A single-family home is in line with the prices in South Kingston. And again, you get one unit on that building lot. When you start to do the cottage cluster, because you can get more than one unit, and this uses four as an example, the price can come down considerably. And you'll see, as you pay the cost of acquisition of the lot, the cost of that acquisition is absorbed by increased density. So there's just a simple example of, if you can do four units, five, even seven units, eight units, nine units, and 10 units, all the way up to 15, how that potentially affects the sales price. The only debate I have with this, and I think Peter may support this in discussions the commission had last month, that just because you're building smaller homes, there is an entry-level price point. So I don't think you get this kind of economies of scale, which is shown in this slide, so simplistically that just because you get an increased density doesn't mean that the builder's going to pass that along to each unit he's selling. There's probably a little less proportionality in here, that if there's an entry-level price point of a home of 275 in the town, if he's getting five units or seven units, you're probably still floating around that 275 range. Now, a developer's not going to drop, in essence, down to 191, which would be maybe $100,000 below the entry-level housing. They're going to hover around that entry spot. Brings us back to the discussion that I started with of, here's the future sewer service district. It's all encompassing. It includes industrial, commercial, business, government, institutional, R200 down to R10. If we just peel away some of the layers and we get rid of the R200, government and institutional, you start to see the R20 and the R, and leave it at R20, R30 as the higher end to the residential. The area gets much smaller. If we drop out the, the R30, if you look at this map, there's really three primary areas. And I'll move my cursor, in the mid-right-hand area, mid-left, and two further up as you get close to the URI. And that, that's really what you have. And the next one, if we take out the R30, there's not a big, I'm just going back and forth a couple times. There isn't a significant change in the area. The potential bigger changes if you drop out R20. This is the area along the river. We've talked about this at length internally between Brian, Jay, and I. And given the nature and the built-out aspect of this, and also its potential impact of onsite septic, that this could be an area that the commission just simply wants to eliminate for discussion purposes at this time.
Yeah, I would definitely concur with that, Jamie.
Okay, so in, in the larger pictures, that's why in, in the previous slides, you really don't see that eastern.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
Okay.
And I think it would be useful to have an overlay of the watershed as a whole when we're looking at this. So we're not just looking at zoning, but we're looking at the land itself.
Okay. This, in essence, I tried to break up the town, you know, we looked at it from, from 10,000 square feet. Now we're looking at the southern portion of town. This is representation of the existing zoning in that area, including R80 areas as well as R40. Next slide is if we simply drop off the R80, R40, and R30. We still have commercial highway in here, commercial neighborhood, multifamily residential. Again, you can see those light gray areas that drop off. We go to the, I'm sorry, and you'll see here, there's R30 in the upper right-hand side of the, the screen. And then if we drop the R30, that's really the only change between those two. We look at a little more central to town. And this is looking, Main Street is in the lower left-hand corner. The industrial area around the mills, we have Old Mountain Road in the center of the photograph. We have 108 or Kingston Road exiting the top left. If we, again, same analysis, looking at dropping the R80s, R40s, and we're left with the R20s, R30s, and R10s. You'll see there, again, primarily, there's only two R30 areas. One just north, a little bit north of Tower Hill Road by my cursor. And then in the top-left corner, heading further up by, heading towards northwest by Curtis Road. Again, primarily, you see R20, R, R10. This, again, drops those R30 areas, which there was really only one. That's a southern, central southern part of town. If we move a little bit further north, and we're looking more in a northerly direction with Curtis Corner Road and Sagatucket Road, just at the top of this frame. Again, you see larger industrial areas. You start to see the influx of R80 and R40 to the westerly edges, larger government institutional in the top right corner of this photo, as well as larger industrial areas. And some significant open space parcels. If we drop those parcels off, you'll start to see the, the changes there. Now we're working closer up to UR, URI. Again, you'll see the R20 and the R30s of the prominent zoning classifications here, as well as some multifamily residential along 108 in the center of this slide. We dropped the R30s off. You have the limited R10 in the southern and northern perimeters, as well as R20. Now looking at the URI area, you're looking at R10, government institutional, and some neighborhood commercial. We, we dropped those out. You're left with the R10, R20, and an area of R30. If we drop the R30, you have R10 and R20. This is specific to Kingston. And you'll see there's really three classifications here. Industrial, R200, and R20. If we drop those off, those are the R20s left.
It's actually West Kingston Village.
Sorry, West Kingston, sorry. By Amtrak, by the Amtrak station.
Yep.
And that industrial corridor. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. And that's, you know, that, a, a quick look at how we looked at this internally on your behalf, and I'll just go back to the overall slide of, of what we're looking at. And, you know, I apologize for the scale. If we were in council chambers, we'd probably be able to have a much better discussion. Jay does have access to the GIS and interactive map, so if there are any questions or we want to blow anything up, we have the ability to do that. But from our perspective, we were looking really at the R10, R20, and R30 classifications, as well as the multifamily residential, the commercial highway, commercial neighborhood, and commercial districts.
Yeah, we'd probably want to see an overlay of the historic district in Kingston.
We were putting some of the moving parts of this together. Jay does have access to that, so I'm going to stop sharing screen right now, so I can see everybody and.
Jamie, a quick question. In regards to some established neighborhoods, say Teft Hill, Brown's Farm, that were subdivisions that were approved by the planning board with a certain number of lots, or a certain number of homes. Are we proposing that these could go in those as well?
I, in, in any aspect, Mr. Chairman, that, anything that was part of a development, whether it's historic to Wakefield or Peace Hill, and was an application before the board set a limit on that density at that time. So whether you're in an R10 area in Peace Hill or Wakefield, at some point in time, an area was divided with an expectation of a certain density, and the mere nature that you're contemplating this reg changes that. So it, it would potentially affect property. You know, I, I'm not sure how you make a cutoff of a development approved in the 90s versus a development approved in the 70s. You know, that, that's not an easy conversation. It's hard to cut a zoning regulation by the date of a development.
Some would pre, predate zoning regulations.
Some, some development associated with the housing and the development of the mills predate zoning.
Yeah. That was a question I had when I was reviewing some of these maps and looking at the areas. And, you know, we're looking at the one we just did on South Road. And again, we, we had some issues on how that was going to be developed and how many units. So it, it brought to mind how this would affect some of our recent decisions. And, you know, not so recent. I mean, Teft Hill is a huge development. And you know, are we going to allow that? I, I, my gut feeling is I would think not, because of the regulations that went into planning that, but you, you seem to think otherwise.
Well, there, there are some developments based on the nature of how they were, you know, a cluster development. If, if it was approved as a cluster development in an R20 or R30, and done as an open space development with a open space set aside, it would be very difficult to undo that, because that's not pertinent to the discussion, because that was approved under a very limited scope, and they received that density only as an open space or cluster development. Those are certain provisions associated with a particular development, that they achieve that density only utilizing a specific aspect of a regulation. I think it would be harder pressed for them to undo that prior approval.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had originally talked about developing this type of these type of units in the core. I mean, obviously, it was in the, the future service area, but we were thinking more of the core, Wakefield, Peace Hill, in my mind. And when you looked at some of the maps you provided, you see like along High Street, and some of the streets off of High Street, and maybe off at Columbia Street, you see some oversized, you know, pre-existing lots that, you know, would make sense that maybe these were places that we could use for infill of this type. And again, I, I'm not sure we envisioned it spreading out into existing subdivisions. Like, I think somebody had mentioned the Oaks. So, I mean, that does draw some concern, and, and I think some of the other board members that expressed that.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. And one of the recent subdivisions that Steve just referenced, the one off of South Road, the adjacent, the most northerly adjacent parcel is actually, it is a residential compound, which is a much less dense-type development. And I think that when we first started talking about the premise of cottage zoning, the idea was that it would be in areas that were close to goods and services, area where it's walkable. And I think that we need to, you know, my sense, after reviewing all the maps and thinking about the conversations that we've had about cottage, is that we really need to think in, in broad terms. To me, it would make the most sense to initially have it be within the sewer service area where there are sewers already present. Because if you allow it where sewers could be hooked up, that's generally a very expensive proposition for an applicant. So it's less likely to occur, and/or the cost of the houses will be greater. And you have to think about what impact it might have on existing homes that may then be required to tie into the sewer system, which, of course, can be more expensive. So I think we need to have a sort of soft approach initially. Think about where it should be and what the unintended consequences might be. Were we to allow expansion of the current sewer district to accommodate these units? And then really think about, as Jamie was referencing, the areas such as R10, R20, multifamily, definitely commercial highway. Everyone knows I'm always talking about Old Tower Hill Road and the opportunities that exist in that area.
Mr. Chairman, if I just, one response to Mrs. Mack's comment regarding whether there's sewer or the availability to hook up sewer. At this density, if you're looking at eight to 10 units, your systems can average anywhere between $10,000 and $15,000 of cost per system, because you're doing that community system. So again, for eight units, you could be anywhere between $80,000 and $120,000 for that onsite septic system, where the hookup fee could be in, in that same realm, but the community gets out of the surface, subsurface sewer treatment business and monitoring and long-term HOA fees potentially. So I would just want you to, to think about that, that just because, you know, Maria's right. If you're a mile from a sewer, an eight- or 10-unit project is not going to be able to absorb that cost to hook up the sewer. But if they're now a couple hundred feet, 300 feet away, 400 feet away, the cost to hook up could be comparable to the cost to do onsite. And it could even be a little bit more, but most HOAs aren't in the business of maintaining the long-term viability of a onsite system. So giving that developer the option to tie in, I think a lot of that will be driven by economics. Not many. And then if sewer is extended to another project, suppose someone builds something industrial and extends a sewer line, do you go back and have to constantly monitor your zoning map to now make a zoning revision? So I think there, there may be some middle ground between Maria's comment and the end of the line, and maybe it's a dimensional aspect that if, if you're looking at the cost of 500 feet of trench and pipe versus doing an onsite system, I think there's a trade-off there. So I would, I would urge you to look at that closely. I wouldn't, in essence, advise you just to have it at the existing limits of where the trunk ends. That there's probably a little bit of wiggle room, and wiggle room is a professional planning term. A little bit of leeway there. A little bit of leeway there, just beyond that. You know, but again, to Maria's point, if, if a sewer lateral ends and the district goes on another thousand feet, there is probably some rational nexus to not have the district go that thousand, thousand-plus feet. rational nexus to not have the district go that thousand, thousand plus feet, but there's probably something in in the three to five hundred foot range based on density that may be affordable for a developer to tie into. Versus having to maintain long-term uh system that an HOA, you never know the uh financial state of that HOA versus the, you know, the town's municipal system should be financed well.
And Jamie, the topography may also be an issue with regard to requiring pumping stations or not.
Okay, now did uh you say Jay had something he wanted to show us?
Jay, we, Jay just has, he, Jay can pull up the historic district overlay on their URI, just so the board can see what that looks like. Also, he has the ability to toggle on and off for you. I know there was some discussion of Maria just brought up, you know, maybe it's definitely the R ten, R twenty, and I think the R thirty is you know, a subject of discussion as well as, you know, targeting a few of the larger are previously approved developments.
So uh, good evening, everybody. I, I pulled this, I put this up uh late, late this afternoon, and I believe it's correct. I was going through Carol's plethora of GIS files and found this. Hopefully, it's reflective of the actual district itself, but these are the parcels in the Kingston Historic District. Kingston Historic District. And I was going along with what uh Jamie was mentioning and toggling off some of the layers. Move this out of the way. So from the R eighty, uh the R eighty and the R two hundred are off on this, as well as Open Space SMD. Marina Special District, GI Industrial. Uh I was thinking, you know, along with what Steve's comment was about prior subdivision approvals, I think it would certainly be relevant that the FDRP project, projects that have been approved previously uh may not be appropriate and those should be excluded just by their very nature of being cluster and requiring that open space surrounding it, as Jamie indicated. There really isn't a whole lot of um, in those type of situations, a whole lot of land area to constitute a viable cottage-type development, in my opinion.
But into Jay's point, they already bargained for their density bonus and layout based on the open space provision. So giving them a second bite at the apple to say, hey, you know, I did a cluster regs, you gave me certain density and a layout and oh, by the way, a couple people within the development want to exceed the original density allowed by the reg.
So I mean, if there's any areas that the board would like to go over uh at this time, I can certainly zoom in on it and um entertain anyone's ideas. Board members.
Questions, concerns?
Has anyone thought about, um, I don't know if you can do this in terms of layers on a map? Um, just calling out water bodies and thinking about impacts to those of a more dense development that then may already exist.
I can't do that on the fly. I did note that you'd like to show water, the watershed boundaries on it. And I think that opens up the question though also of uh is it, are are we anticipating that these are primarily connected to the sewer? And does that change the concern of environmental impact or water quality in the, in those instances? We are talking about being within the future sewer service district. Is it anticipated that they would be, be connected to the sewer system or provisions for OWTS are okay, even though they are within the future sewer service area?
Jay, can you drop off the R forty?
Yes.
Jay, can you remind us about this future sewer sewer service area? What is the conditions then? That, you know, so is that something that is then considered by John Shock to say, okay, we'll do it or not? I, remind me of what, how that works?
Yeah, so, so the future sewer service area is the area where obviously sewer is anticipated uh to, to be provided in the future. When an application comes in, in that uh, in this area, they have to perform a sewer feasibility study uh if they are not going to connect to the sewer system. In that, they need to address nine items that John Shock reviews. It's a multifaceted approach. Part of it is the economics, the cost, the cost burden that the applicant would bear. The other components of it, I'm not extremely familiar with it. It's actually in the general code, not in the subdivision regs or the zone, or zoning. Uh Amy might be more familiar with it, but there are other aspects that they also uh need to attest to. John, uh the DPS, the Department of Public Services receives that and weighs in on those criteria to determine if there's enough justification there not to force them to connect to the sewer system. So it really becomes a judgment call uh based on the criteria, based on the answers to the criteria that they're required to provide. And uh as we've seen before, that determination from John is appealable to the town manager who could take a second look at it and make a determination if John was correct or if he feels that he may, that he may have heard a little. But it is anticipated that these areas would be the properties within this area would be serviced by the sewer system.
Thank you.
So I, I would think uh based on our discussion already, that a lot of uh development along South Road somewhat on Broad Rock Road, where we have clusters and the open space developments would be taken out of this scenario.
Would it, would it be prudent to specifically uh eliminate FDRPs, formally approved subdivisions that were flexible design residential projects?
Probably make it easier for us. I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at a huge area right now that where this is possible and you know, if we knock those out, it might pare it down and make it look a little more reasonable. I mean, I think a lot of people are concerned that we're talking such a large area. You know, we, we kind of started out with the core and the core was Wakefield and Peacedale. And and now we're kind of looking at the uh the middle of the town from one end, from Salt Pond to uh to West Kingston, to the train station.
Again, the other aspect, Mr. Chairman, that you could look at is, again, we're we're flying at ten thousand feet that the board can make a extremely educated decision on the limits of this. And again, if your focus is in essence, the center of town or the intersections of of Peacedale and Wakefield, we can look at, you know, kind of the one mile, one and a half mile radius around those zones and, you know, make it concentric on those two village areas and go from there. I think the, the other primary village area, two village areas that have access to sewer are Kingston and West Kingston.
I, and I think might have been Maria mentioned at the last meeting that, you know, maybe we could do this in a two-chair form that we, we try a certain area and see how it goes and maybe expand it at a future date. Not know, again, not knowing what we're gonna get for, for development. And I think Jay had mentioned that maybe we'd limit it to twenty a year. Or was that uh, oh no, I'm sorry. That was the uh tax deferral on uh.
That was the AUDs.
Using my meetings.
Hey Steve, how do you say, uh you can volunteer my kid but not your kid? How do we determine where we're gonna try this and if it didn't work, go oops?
Well, that's why I said, you know, the, the core. I mean, we talked about it being walkable to uh, to the center. I'm, you know, and again, I'm, I'm throwing that out there to get some feedback from, from or or pushback from board members. Do you envision we should put it everywhere or we should start it somewhere, Peter?
I mean, I think things that, you know, and obviously there's a lot of this conversation, but the feedback we got last week was pretty, you know, talking about spreading this everywhere, so it's not just one space. I think there needs to be controls put on it. I don't think we should open the gates and, you know, I think there was a certain amount someone said or or tried for a year. I think Maria said like some sunset clause or something that we could come back to and say, whoa, this might not be working. Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think like those FDRPs that already developed neighborhoods, I don't think we can go in there and just say, go to town, you know, I think we have to follow those rules. So I, I do think it makes sense to keep it by the sewers for now. Uh and I think it also makes sense to keep it to walkable things. So I know the core is where we're talking about and there's also Kingston, you know, I think Kingston's a good point, you know, by URI, I'm thinking, you know, grad professors and stuff like that, people living there could, could walk into work. So those are my, my initial thoughts right now. Uh but I think what we're doing isn't working. I mean, that was what we heard last week. A lot of people talking about they can't live here, they can't afford to live here. There's all these things that we need to do to help. We, if we stick to the same old stuff, we're gonna have the same town. And that's from what we're hearing is not necessarily the case that everyone wants, so.
Alright.
A, a separate, a little spinoff to that is, I know um Maria brought up the point of uh being close to the sewer, close to a sewer line. What if it was mandatory that they be connected to sewer and you leave the connection or the feasibility of the connection up to the developer? Saying you can do this type of development so long as it's connected to the sewer system. It would be their call as to whether or not it would work for them or not for that property.
That's a good point.
Rather, rather than, you know, um rather than eliminating opportunities in other areas simply based off of location, if the developer is willing to connect to it, it, it does lend itself to reduce the overall environmental impacts and puts the choice with them.
Other comments from board members on the, the scope of uh where we'd like to see this within the town? Go ahead, Susan.
Um, this is Susan. Um, so I would like to agree with Maria that I'm also concerned and in my notes I sent to Jamie that I think if it's too far from existing sewer lines, it's going to be very expensive and thereby would cause more density or size of projects to absorb that cost if they're too far from the existing sewer lines. So I would prefer to see it closer or on top of sewer lines. And I also, I guess, would like to ask somebody what the implications are. If they do put down a new sewer line to some development that's farther away, how does that affect the existing homes in that area that are on septic? Are they then required to tap into that sewer or how does that work for future homes going forward?
Typically, they're required uh within so many months to uh, to hook up. I think that's in the town uh sewer ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, we, we can check on that, but that's typically when the municipality is doing a sewer extension because they need to finance that.
Okay.
It's different when private sectors tying into that and some options of, I think Maria alluded to it earlier. There may be a pump station in a forced main, which will actually prohibit someone along that frontage from tying in. So there are a number of parameters associated with that. But again, I think it, I think it's a good point and we can clarify that.
It would also be complicated by, um, you know, Steve, I'll use you as an example. If, if you happen to have just replaced your septic system three months ago and now the town is telling you, sorry, you have to connect to the sewer, I think we would all have a an issue with, with that direct directive.
Okay.
But I, um, sorry, this is Susan again. I'd also like to talk a little bit about Kingston. I'm, I fear that these cottages would be student rentals. They make the perfect size apartment or house for student rentals. And I think that if you build them in the Village of Kingston, you're basically building an off-campus student housing compound. And aside from the two deed restricted or whatever units, I feel like the rest are going to become inexpensive student housing. And I don't think that's in the spirit of what we're trying to do here, is create sort of um like that little development just north of campus that was built, what was that, five or six years ago? It's all just students living in there. And I don't know if that was the spirit of it, but that's what it became, the one on just north of Flag Road.
Eldred Farm. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it, if I may, it, it's difficult to design a regulation, nor do I think it's appropriate to try and determine who's gonna live in what style of housing within the community. You can anticipate it, but you know, zoning regulations shouldn't necessarily be, be drafted in a manner to and uh a certain social economical class or educational class um race from having opportunities to live in that housing. A, a lot of us were college students. I was a graduate student and in some aspects would have appreciated the ability to live in a nice community at an affordable rate. Um, there are a lot of competing factors in the community for housing, whether it's single-family rental, AUD. And I think, you know, to Susan's point, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, Susan, but there are just opportunities for that student as well as the professor and the market will drive the conditions of what they can rent for. A- and the density you're hoping makes them more affordable for the community, but you can't necessarily control whether a young student who just graduated a, a nursing program and is working at South County Hospital is living there or whether a graduate student is or an undergraduate. I, it's a difficult conversation to have. Um but you're offering a style of housing that is intended to be affordable to the residents of the community and new residents who would like to move into the community. And zoning typically isn't in the mindset to restrict who is the ultimate person residing in the unit, whether it's rental or, or market rate. But I, your point is well taken. I know the intent of the regulations is to make, create neighborhoods and sense of place and viability and vibrancy to the community and not just be student housing, but I don't know a way to control that.
Um, sorry, this is Susan again. I am not trying to discriminate against students and where students live. I mean, I have, I have a college student right now living in a four-bedroom house in Kingston. And so I get it, I'm not trying to discriminate against students. But I think if the spirit of our pro- proposal here with, with cottage zoning is to give working force uh residents a place to live, but we build it, you know, next to the Kingston Emporium, that's not necessarily, I think, our best strategy for attracting workforce housing folks and building it for our community. I think we're building it, I mean, there's lots of um apartments up by campus, but I don't think, maybe I'm wrong, but that, I don't think that's where our workforce housing um is taking place in our town. Like, there's lots of affordable, I guess affordable, inexpensive apartments on campus. They're seasonal and they're full of students. And if that's what we're doing with our cottage zoning, so be it. But I think I just see that being what happens if you build these cottages in Kingston.
Um, I also.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Maria.
My, my audio is doing odd things tonight. I don't know why. Um, I just wanted to uh remind folks that um even though it was the first one in the state and isn't necessarily the best model, hopefully we will end up with the best models. Um, the cottages on Green are right in a very central area. They're right off of their main street. And I think that, again, access to transportation, access to sidewalks, goods and services, I think that's got to be one of the primary reasons for having this type of housing. And, and we're using a lot of terms interchangeably, missing middle housing and workforce housing, and that does apply to and workforce housing. And that does apply to much of what we're trying to do with affordability. Um, however, the cottages, because of their size and the low number of bedrooms are um, specifically oriented toward either um, a, a young family or um, uh, folks who have um, moved out of a large house and are looking to downsize.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Uh, Pam?
Yeah, I, I just want to, I'm going to be the devil's advocate to Sue, to Susan and um, I think that one of the things that we've heard is that so often students take things that other people wouldn't, cannot then use, right? And so I'm just wondering if there is no problem with adding the density to the village of Kingston. So be it. If it's for students, then they don't come into town. And they don't take the cottage community on High Street or wherever we're going to put it. So I guess that would be my thought of if it's appropriate for that area, whether it's for workforce housing. And I could, I could totally imagine that somebody would buy it for, for, and then rent it to um, to faculty and, and visiting faculty. I could totally see that. But in any case, even if it is students, then they are not moving somewhere else and taking those other cottages somewhere else. But I would say let's depend, let's make it depend upon the suitability. With some consideration, obviously to, to what the, what the market is, but I, I'm just wondering. So that, that's just my thought. I'm, and I'm just being the devil's advocate to just kind of put that out there.
Joe? If I can, I'm going to pop up a slide if I can, if I may.
Okay. And I think Joe had his hand raised. While he's working on that, uh, go ahead, Joe.
Um, so I'm definitely okay with Wakefield and Peacedale. I'm with Pam on Kingston. Um, I think that um, even if we provide housing for students, there's nothing wrong with that. And if there is a student housing on the side of Emporium, well, I think people that live there kind of bought into the college life already. So I'm, I'm okay with that. My interest really is also in West Kingston. Um, I mean, my personal feeling is that, you know, we, we've been thinking about West Kingston for a long period of time. We haven't done anything with it. I'd like to see some type of mixed use where there's uh, maybe office commercial down below and apartments above, but um, if we're not going to make any progress on that, I, I'd like to see West Kingston also included.
That's a good point, Joe. We had talked at a work session some time ago, I think when we had with some Amtrak representatives. And, and there was talk of rezoning uh, Kingston Road around the old courthouse uh, area. Uh, that's been discussed uh, for many years now, over many boards. Uh, and, and that would, that would be a great addition to it. And it's close to the uh, uh, to Amtrak for people that want to commute. So uh, that would be a great idea.
I mean, I think my vision is a little different than cottage zoning for that. I'd like to see, you know, kind of a quaint uh, commercial office down below and apartments above, but uh, lacking that, I think cottage would be, would be next best thing.
But that's maybe something, like you said, with a mixed use, where maybe you have the commercial on the front and maybe have some cottages and on the back, some of those lots along that road go pretty deep.
Right.
But uh, I gather, is there a consensus on the uh, on the R ten and the R twenty and the R thirty? I think one of those R thirty lots, which is over by Arbor Lane, that might be the one that the uh, bank um, has on the purchase agreement right now. So I'm not sure that lot would uh, would be part of this.
I'm okay with R ten and R twenty at this point.
Okay. And I, I think the other R thirty, I don't know if that was some type of subdivision.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the R thirty is limited within, within our, in essence, our study area that we put up tonight. So if the board was a little more comfortable not including R thirty, you know, there are that many lots that, that drop off. Um, the slide I did put up, and I think this is the basis of some of the discussion that perhaps started the conversation this evening to to evoke conversation amongst the board members and a reminder of this is just one component of that meeting middle missing middle on my tongue twister for tonight, the missing middle. Because, you know, Joe alluded to it, Maria has, Pam has, Peter has, that there are other types of of housing that if you look at the, the slide I have on, that if you did kind of a concentric circle of, of Main Street and and South Road or an intersection and said it's within a half mile of that or a mile radius of that. There are other types of housing that you're going to discuss in the next two, three, four, five months that may have a, a secondary perimeter to this, such as the mansion house or a duplex. So although you're being more focused and targeted now, the other style of housing may be appropriate, more appropriate on the peripheral. And we're talking about cottage at a density of eight units an acre with a minimum of six. That as you go to the next type of housing, you may find out that a cottage style or duplex style at a density of four per acre may make this circle bigger. Because four per acre or two per acre, whether it's the, you know, the Oaks or some other real um, off a Briarwood or something that someone adding a duplex or an AUD or if there was a vacant lot, adding three cottage units is much more palatable than doing eight per acre. So again, I, I, I want, wanted to circle back to where we started this conversation that this is one component of a multitude of housing opportunities that the board is exploring. I don't know if the board members feel a little more, well, if even within the discussion of R ten, R twenty and R thirty, that we still limit the perimeter of that around the concentric circle. Or we go up to URI and we pick, you know, North Road and one oh eight as the intersection and, and do a half mile radius and we, you know, in essence, pick the Amtrak station and draw a half mile radius on that. And so long as you're within that half mile and you fall within the R ten, R twenty, R thirty, you have an opportunity for taking this regulation. But if you fall outside of that, you don't have an opportunity. And added a layer to that is you have to be inside of it with access to sewer or in close proximity to a sewer. Or to Jay's point, you let the market determine that. If the developer feels he can afford to tie in, then he does the development. If he can't afford to tie in, then he can't do the development because you want this density to be on the sewer system. And to Maria's point, if it's on the sewer system, it, it probably doesn't stress natural resources in close proximity to the development because you worried about onsite septic and nitrogen load and, and other factor.
Um, two things I just wanted to mention. Uh, one is that I think we need to look at Kingston and the area adjacent to the university very carefully because it's been, there's been a lot of incremental development that has um, not always uh, been great for the neighborhoods. I mean, you see a lot of, you know, Susan referenced students and cars parked all over yards and overflowing dumpsters. And we've had that conversation before about the three unrelated uh, people on the special use permit, which we haven't really gone back to, but I, I, I have a concern about that and therefore feel more comfortable with Peace Dale and Wakefield also. Um, as far as the um, Old Tower Hill Road area is concerned and which is largely um, commercial highway. Um, I think that is a, an opportunity for mixed use because I, when I advocate for that area, I'm not saying let's get rid of commercial because we have so little commercial in South Kingston. But a mixed use kind of concept. And if anyone has had, I don't know if they're posted on the URI website, but if anyone has had the chance to go back and look at the drawings from Will Green's class, they have um, mixed use and then little mini residential districts that are really interesting. I know Brian, you said you had access to the um, to the plans.
Yeah, I, I think I do have them tucked away in my notebook someplace.
Mr. Chairman, I think Maria, a good point that, you know, to, to push this along, and I say that subtly, that it may be appropriate in the discussion to, if, if we looked at this concentric circle and we worked off of that, that you eliminate the commercial highway district for now, because I think it's potentially short sighted in the discussion to just throw cottages in there when there may be a higher and best use in that corridor. And if there was a vacant lot and you wanted three-story, you know, townhouses there, two years from now, oops, in, in 2021, we put a cottage development there at eight units an acre when we actually wanted forty units an acre. So, you know, I would, I would have no issues um, with kind of backing out of the commercial highway until you have all types of housing that could be applied to that zone.
I mean, I didn't mean to eliminate a commercial highway, but again, it would be nice to look at it in the more broad sense of mixed use.
Yeah.
Maria? The cottage would be a good segue behind the commercial highway along that car, those corridors, that if we could infill with some cottages behind those areas, there would, there would be a good buffer uh, before the residential areas and, and some of those areas.
Definitely. I mean, I think Jamie's point about having some of the other types of housing in that area i- is valid. Um, that original slide, Jamie, that you showed us this evening that had a linear um, set of buildings that ranged from, I don't remember what the lower one was. Yeah, there you go. Um, even though what you're showing as courtyard apartments look a little odd to me because they look sort of like very um, rectangular uh, uh, houses that don't necessarily have that. Now, it's really hard to see.
Yeah, I'm trying to blow it up for you.
Yeah.
There you go. A little bit better.
Yes.
Uh, if there's no other comments at the moment from board members, I'll entertain some questions uh, from some of the attendees in the audience. If you want to raise your hand. Okay, it doesn't look like uh, we have any hands raised at the moment. So this seems to be our uh, our sticking point uh, moving forward on this, on this ordinance is nailing down the area. So we've eliminated the R thirty and the commercial highway uh, for the time, uh, at this point. We're going to do it in the R twenty, the R ten, commercial downtown, commercial neighborhood. Jamie, what about uh, our uh, we have a few RM scattered, mostly in the downtown area. Would it be allowed in there?
Yeah, I, I think there, most of those are built on. Um, so I, again, we would recommend they be included in that.
Okay.
I'm not sure we have too many vacant parcels there. I don't think it, it, it's a significant risk to include them. Um, is there some sense from the board that we're looking at the R ten, R twenty as well as the, you know, multifamily residential, a couple other districts we talked about? To do concentric circles around the cores and, and work out from that or just stick with the R ten, R twenty and those other districts within the, the limits of the sewer service district?
To Peter's point, he said, you know, why restrict it or put it on the onus on some people, not, and not everyone. So.
Okay.
Um, how does the rest of the board feel about that? Maria, you're muted.
That's going to be a saying on a T-shirt soon, you know.
Yeah, why can't you hear me now?
Right. I, I mean, I think uh, again, initially with the idea of a sunset um, clause, we should uh, stick to the to what an area is zoned um, rather than get uh, you know, get into a kind of concentric circle that may not be R ten or R twenty or CN, CH, um, CD.
Okay, so.
And we still have to, we, we still have to be careful about the CD and the CN as um, as Steve mentioned, i- it's one thing to have um, a, a business on the first floor and to have apartments or residential on the second floor, but we want to be careful that we don't eliminate potential for some of our commercial areas. So again, back to that mixed use concept.
Pam? You're okay?
I, I think, I think that we've talked about a lot of different things and I, I would agree with Maria and um, let's, let's move forward to the next step and try to see where, where this leads us.
Okay, Joe, you, you good with it?
So I like the R ten and the uh, the R twenty. I like the Peacedale, Wakefield and Kingston. I'm not as crazy about the commercial districts. I mean, we want these things to look like bungalows. We got this idea of how we want these houses to look. We want it to look like cottages. It's not necessarily a good match there downtown. Um, on the peripheral and the R ten and the R twenty, but uh, what we're envisioning for the architectural style doesn't necessarily lend itself to commercial downtown. So I'm not big on the commercial. I think there's better uses. Well, some of that other stuff Jamie showed that live work, I think that we should be looking at that for those other zones.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Joe on that.
Alright, so we're going to eliminate CD.
Well, that might also get to, you know, encouraging more of some of the other stuff like we saw the proposal for Robinson Street and such. So maybe there's other kinds of, as you're pointing out, other kind of incentives or or such that we could provide for those multi-use.
Okay. Susan? I know, I know you had your concerns with Kingston.
Well, yeah, it's my hood. Are we, are we eliminating some neighborhoods from consideration or just doing a blanket of as long as it's zoned R ten or R twenty, it's good to go. Like we talked about the Oaks or Teft Hill or, you know, some neighborhoods in Kingston that are older established neighborhoods. Is this blanket going to be encompassing all of this land? Are we eliminating some spaces?
Jamie uh, said that they would have to go and look at some of those existing developments if they were designed, especially with clusters or open space um, limitations that uh, this would probably not be an acceptable use within those areas. So they'll have to filter some of those out.
But if it's not precluded by the original um, development plan, they would be then included?
Uh, maybe Brian, Brian's got to stand up. Maybe he's going to answer that.
Yeah, I, I, I just think we have to be very careful about the slippery slope of uh, eliminating particular neighborhoods. Um, I think you need to be careful that if you're going to eliminate them, you have some sort of objective criteria by which you are eliminating them. Um, you know, for example, um, were they already approved under um, a program such as FDRP where um, changing the status of it doesn't really work? Or are we eliminating it because uh, it's too far away from potential sewer service that there's no realistic point of hookup? Um, if you start going down saying, well, we just don't want it in this neighborhood and we just don't want it in that neighborhood, um, the subjectivity involved in that call just does not look good, I don't think for the board.
And what about, um, Steve, you probably remember this. Um, there, there was a residential compound um, off of Tucker Town. And when it was developed, um, they had more open space than was required. And remember they came back and took some of that open space and and, and added lots to that. So, you know, I think there. So, you know, I think there needs to be some kind of, uh, something written in the ordinance that people can't, um, detract, you know, they can't use open space that's dedicated to um, a particular, um, compound or subdivision.
I, I think Maria, to Jay and Brian's point earlier, that would fall within the cat and we'll look at language potentially with Amy. Um, that if you use that classification to get you a certain permit avenue or density that you can't, but hey, you know, homeowners association got together and we think we should sell our two acres of open space to a developer to do this neat little cluster development. We'll, we'll try and, I think, Amy, i- if we can be creative and add a sentence or two to try and clarify that.
And would it be helpful as we look at this ordinance, um, if we're going to look about where we're going to allow it? Um, to contemplate what, um, the reason behind denial might be, some of the reasons that we might say it's not appropriate for a lot.
Um, I think me explain that to you last, uh, month or the month before that. In essence, you're writing a regulation that is permitted use as of right, so long as you meet the kind of bulk density and design criteria. That you're predetermining that this density is appropriate, so long as they check all the boxes. If they check all the boxes, you in essence can't decide that it's inappropriate. Because there may be neighborhood resistance and, and Amy, feel free to chime in if, if I misspoke.
Wouldn't it also be about the normal, uh, constraints that we take into consideration? Steep slopes, not being underwater, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Environmental, you know, if they don't have adequate sightline for their proposed driveway, they can't claim, hey, you approve. But you can't see when you turn left or right out of the development. Or if they're trying to build on 20% slopes and we have a regulation that says driveways can't be steeper than, than 15. Uh, again, they have to meet those environmental constraints and design around them. If they can't around them, they don't meet the criteria contained in the regs.
I'm asking that only for the benefit of, of the audience or who may watch this video at some point. And, and be concerned that we're just, you know, don't have any constraints on this. So. Okay. Staff have any more questions of the board in, in regards to, uh, working out the details on this?
I, I think we have some consensus and, and a little more clarity than we had coming into the meeting. So I think it was a really good productive conversation this evening. It will allow, uh, Ryan, Jay and I to, to work on and refine the mapping and the limits. Uh, we'll try and get that out to you, uh, earlier. I know we did receive comments from one or two members, uh, uh, one in writing and one verbally. Uh, so if we can get that out to you in the next two weeks. We'll, we'll solicit input from the board members and it on the agenda for the next work session in hopes that we can try and resolve this and, and move it along to town council.
And by the way, the maps were excellent. I mean, we could spend a whole meeting just looking at the maps in different parts of town.
It was interesting to see some of the old lots and how they were configured and, uh, and how lodged somewhere in comparison to, uh, surrounding.
Uh, I'll give credit where credit is due. Jay worked, uh, on those. Um, Ryan and I provided input, but, but Jay did spend quite a bit of time. And again, we, we decided at the staff level on your behalf to put the effort in. Because we're going to keep reusing those as we discuss exits and mansion houses and, and that discussion, we're going to keep relying to them. Uh, and going back and forth with them. So I think they're a, a good product we can work on and work on.
Pretty, pretty productive working from home.
Jay gets more work done in the office. We have young children that, uh, can create distractions over time.
All right.
Especially during snow days.
Okay, well, again, uh, we have some attendees. Anybody in the audience that wants to add a comment before we, uh, move on to our next topic, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anyone. So, all right, that's it. We'll, uh, move to our next, uh, item on the discussion was, uh, ethics training. Amy?
This is Amy. I have an announcement on this. We now have a date on the calendar as of last Friday. I believe it was confirmed between the Ethics Commission, Education Coordinator and the Town Manager. It's going to be February 23rd. That's a Tuesday at six o'clock. Yes, that is before regularly scheduled seven o'clock meeting. Um, I am unsure whether this is going to be open to everyone in town. Um, I know the manager wanted to have the training open to the planning board specifically, as well as department heads. I believe it's also going to be, um, offered to the school committee as well. So, um, be on the lookout for info about that, but I believe you can go ahead and pencil that data in. Given that that's only in a few weeks, um, I would suggest we postpone the substantive discussion and let the, um, the expert on that topic provide an overview. Unless you want me to do a preview, if anyone knows, you definitely can't make it. Or if you have any specific questions, and I know you all know that you can contact me at any time if you have questions of an ethical nature.
Anybody have a question of Amy?
Uh, Amy, will that presentation be limited to an hour?
Well, I guess for us it will be. Um, yeah.
Right.
So, and, and I don't know how they're doing the trainings now that they're all, um, on Zoom. I don't know if they're available to watch later. Um, I, I don't know yet. I'll share info about that with you when it becomes available. And it's, it's probably, I think, going to come through Jamie and, and not through me.
And will they reference, um, potential changes or extensions of the Open Meetings Act as well?
No, this is, this is not going to have anything to do with the OMA. I can discuss that tonight. Um, but this would be solely on the code of ethics. Um, you asked about the Open Meetings Act and, and, um, we can get into it now, um, with the, because I don't, I don't think I have anything in particular on my legal issues update. Yes, the Open Meetings Act, as you know, we're now under Governor Raimondo's executive order 20 dash four six as extended. Um, and that's what we expect to be under. Um, I'm going to just say through the end of the legislative session, and it's possible that the General Assembly will, um, adopt legislation making some version of the allowance or mandate for remote meetings be permanent. Um, DBR is working on legislation to that effect. Um, there's a working group for that legislation. I know that the League of Cities and Towns has some specific concerns with the mandate. Um, you know, as of now, all public bodies subject to the Open Meetings Act are required to provide Zoom access. Just like the planning board has been doing, of course, for the last almost year. Um, it's been going very well for us, um, thanks to the efforts of staff, um, and, and everyone's patience. Um, other public bodies, I have to say, um, especially ones that were a little late to the Zoom game. It's in from, to be fair, you know, if you're in a town or a city that wasn't so up to speed with technology and didn't have the resources that South Kingston did, um, it's been a rougher transition. So the answer is stay tuned to see what, if anything, develops with that. Um, I don't think I have any official updates on that.
Okay, thank you. And I guess you're up on the next item for Shab and Fieldstone Farms, Amy?
Yeah, so I think we talked about this last month and you know that, um, we are still awaiting the written decision from Shab. Their legal counsel drafts something that looks a lot like a judicial decision to reflect the, the vote of Shab. Which, as you know, was to, um, uphold in part and reverse in part. Um, the board's decision on Fieldstone Farms, in particular, the sidewalk condition was thrown out or rejected. Um, but the finding on, um, integration and the requirement that the LMI units um, could not be provided solely as accessory units, you know, essentially the requirement, the, uh, that the applicant redesigned the project was upheld. Um, so we are waiting for the written decision to come out on that. I will also ask for audio or a transcript if, if one is available. But I, let's defer, um, a fuller discussion on that i- if it's okay until we have that written decision in front of us.
Okay. Thank you. Item F, Jamie, the application process.
Um. With regards to the application process, we, the department in the board has had a organizational chart on, on the flow of an application. And part of that flow chart starts the application process with a meeting internal to the department before they come to the board as a preliminary discussion. I think do perhaps to workload over the last, uh, few years that the department has lost sight of that. We're in the process of advising applicants that their first stop is in the department. Uh, so that when they come to the pre-app, they're much more organized. Uh, we're also learning, um, the board and what your requirements are and intricate requirements related to the regulations and expectations are. The, um, simple discussions, please don't submit a plan if the landscape plan isn't done and our regulations require it. Please don't not show a dumpster enclosure if you're doing a commercial development and you don't have a dumpster enclosure or even a dumpster on the site. So we're trying to meet with them upfront, give them a little helping hand and guidance of, you know, these are the expectations of the planning board. Here are our regulations. We'll have that brief discussion with them internally amongst staff to better prep them before they come to you in the preliminary phase. Then we go on to the master plan and then, um, and I'm sorry. Department first and pre-app, I'm always mixing terms slightly with, you know, preliminary to me is always with the board before you apply. And Rhode Island preliminary is before the board. So in essence, staff first, pre-application with the planning board. Then master plan and then preliminary application. And then final, and I think somehow, the, and I'm not even sure the board's aware of it. The department lost sight of that initial contact with the developer and the application, especially on mixed use, commercial or, or, you know, you're entertaining the cottages. I think we would be doing you a disservice if we didn't first invite the applicants into the office. As our flow chart suggests, uh, before they come to you. To try and tick off that low hanging fruit that, you know, commission members get a little discouraged, really, you know. You didn't give us a landscape plan. You don't have a dumpster enclosure. You didn't give us any sense of what the building's going to look like. How do you turn around? Did you talk to the fire department yet? Where's a fire truck turn around? We're just trying to, you know, we know the 10th thing, you know, we have a, you know, Johnny, I'm going to date myself, Johnny Carson to David Letterman. Uh, top 10 list. We know what you're asking for. We just want to make sure it starts to show up on plans before you have to ask the applicant to please show them, even though the regulation requires them to. So we just, we want to make you aware of that. And if you have any issues with that, uh, please reach out to me or, or we can have a conversation about it now. But we're trying to, if we have that meeting early on, it may take an extra two weeks for the application. But I think it actually expedites the process in the big picture. So if you, the board members have any thoughts, we'd, we'd really appreciate it.
I think, uh, Jay had mentioned to me that, uh, one of the checklist was missing. Um, the requirement to have a yield plan. Was, was that for, was that for comprehensive plans, uh, Jay?
No, that's, that's on, that's the conceptual master plan submission.
Okay.
Uh, it does, it does have a subsection in the checklist for FDRPs.
Okay.
But if it's not an FDRP, it, 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 it needs to be in there.
Okay, so that, that's something we have to.
Yeah, and I'm aware of, uh, those changes, but to, and you will be seeing that at some point. I'm just trying to formulate a good way of incorporating the changes that I think we need to address. But to build off of Jamie's point, I think, I know the board has been seeing, uh, applications that haven't been as complete as they possibly should be. And part of that, you know, is the desire of applicants, uh, as it is everywhere. To get the application in and get before the board or to make it to TRC even before it's incomplete. And many times the timeframe that we receive an application to where we have to schedule with TRC and start the ball rolling. There isn't a lot of extra time in there to have a conversation, to, to do that before they submit. So we're trying to kind of back it up a little bit and, and, you know, while the discussions that I've had with some applicants, while they weren't pleased about it, by the time I got done speaking to them by saying, look, this is actually going to save you time in the long run. Yes, you may not get on next week or in two weeks. But you, there's a better chance of you not being continued. There's a better chance of having less questions being asked because you've already accounted for it. Trust us a little bit and work through that. And that's what, we're slowly having those conversations with applications that come in. Uh, we, we need to do, uh, I, I particularly need to do a better job of, of engaging with the applicant early on. And, and quite honestly, with the remote working and not being in the office all the time. If an application comes in when I'm working from home, sometimes I don't know about it. And now we already have the application. We have to, we have to do something with it. So we, we kind of need to reset the clock a little bit and go back. And by all means, it's not to slow down things, it's to make sure they're more complete so that they get through the process in a more expeditions manner.
Well, it's important to the board because we're on a, a strict timetable once it's approved. So.
Exactly. We, we have a shorter timeframe now than we used to and, um, they really should be. It, it's really about completeness or lack thereof. Um, and, uh, Jamie question, uh, at the staff level, initial meeting, that includes DPS, correct?
Yes, yeah. Rich, Rich would be involved. Depending on the scale of them, um, we're building a really good, you know, uh, as, you know, three of us learn, uh, the expectations of the, we're understanding the expectations of, of Rich and John. So we can have that discussion of, you know, guys, you're going to need to deal with sightline. There's a culvert out there. You're going to have to talk about sewer. You're going to have to do your yield plan. You're going to have to do sewer, sewer service calculations. And, you know, we'll, we'll potentially develop a working relationship, almost even a checklist if Rich and John are very good about that, that, you know, engineering is expecting you to, to tick off these 10 boxes. Whether in their regulatory or not, these are the questions they're going to ask. Be prepared. You know.
And I, I would offer.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I would.
Involve them when we can.
I would offer a slight modification to that because I wouldn't want to, I don't think it would be pertinent to have the pre-meeting be a mini TRC meeting. We're gauging TR, you know, at TRC, we're going before everybody. But I, I do see value in knowing what a certain component is that might have to do with DPS. And strongly encouraging the applicant that they should reach out to John Shock, find out what the process is going to be, find out what they're going to be looking for. And be prepared at TRC to answer those questions. And if they don't, you know, because a lot of those items may not be checklist or completeness items. They may be the flow of the actual content of the application. So I think it'll be a little bit of a hybrid approach where we know where we need to bring them in or where we, where we necessarily don't have to.
And Maria, to Jay's point, a lot of it's scalable. If we're having a pre-application meeting with someone who has a, a, a minor subdivision for two lots. We name, may not pull Rich over to a meeting.
Of course. Right.
But if we're looking at, you know, a, a 40 unit multifamily housing project.
Yes.
Um, we may have at least Rich or, or John, just a lot of it is also meet and greet. Um, a lot of familiar faces with the engineering and surveying, but as projects get bigger, the talent pool changes. And you're going to potentially see outside firms that we're not used to dealing with. Um, and getting them name faces, exchanging phone numbers is part of the process.
Yes. Yes, right.
All right. Um, Planning Board liaison activities, anything to report? Maria, Rachel.
Um, I just mentioned that the Affordable Housing did have a meeting, we did have a uh, a forum. Um, a little footnote, though, I think there's three vacancies, so if anybody knows someone that's interested in the Affordable Housing and has a little time to contribute to the town, um, please mention that. But as far as the discussions go, they pretty much just reflected the discussions that we had with the town council. I don't think there's really too much else to.
Yeah, I think they discussed last night, Joe, that uh at the town council meeting that they had, were advertising, that they were down three members. Um, so, um, they are, they do know that and it's being advertised, so hopefully they'll find someone soon. Maria, anything on the?
I don't know why I'm having trouble. Um, nothing, well, uh, nothing with the scenic roadway uh committee, not yet, soon though, I'm hearing.
Is that uh lack of uh members or just hasn't been recognized?
I think it's just practicality and staff time and effort.
Okay. All right. Next item up is uh update from the Planning Department, or we've covered that already?
Um, just, just primary update on the Comprehensive Community Plan. I'm about seventy percent of the way through on the edits. Um, Council has given me a target of three weeks, and that was a week ago. Um, so I have a little over uh two weeks to wrap that up, and I should be on time for that.
Okay.
Time or in trouble, I'm not sure what.
Yeah.
But again, I, uh.
Call that under the gun.
To deliver that as a product. But again, we're going through, there's, there's a lot of little things um in there that it, it really takes a close read. Jay, Brian, I divided the document up and, you know, equally, and um almost through Brian's comments, and we will be working on Jay's and then finally implementation. It, it's going relatively smoothly, it's, again, trying to uh allocate the time and, and manage the workload.
Okay.
Without letting things fall through the cracks, we, you know, we're trying not to miss anything on the permitting side. That's, to me, that's the most important thing. A comp plan for a few more days is uh I don't wanna say less important, but equally as important. But if we miss something on development review, we can't undo that. You know, we just can't.
Absolutely.
And then our, once that's completed, our work plan at some future work session.
Okay. Up rate on legal issues, did you have anything to add, Amy?
I don't.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Um, just uh a future item for a work session is um conversation about the comprehensive permits and the process as it relates to the memo that Peter wrote um, that we were going to discuss at some future work session.
Okay. Joe, are you raising your hands to speak or to make a motion? You, you, oh, okay. Pam has a, has a question for us. Yes, Pam?
Um, two things. One is, did we wanna ask for any more? I see that there's panel, and there's still attendees because we talked about several things. I didn't know if you wanted to ask them if they had any other comments, even though nobody's hands up. But the other thing that I wanted to ask was, can our planning team just remind us of all the meetings that are coming up? Because I think I don't have them all on my calendar.
Do you have Thursdays on your calendar?
What's that?
Do you have Thursdays on your calendar?
No.
This Thursday, not every Thursday.
I know, I, I just saw it in the um, yeah, in one of the, the emails, I was like, oh my, so.
Jay sent me something and I'll forward it to you that has all the dates on it.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, well, for the record, for, for all the board members, uh, it's T R C tomorrow at nine.
It's me.
This is Joe. Uh, Thursday, February eleventh is a special meeting, um, at Tunica Beach Condos. Uh, Thursday, February eighteenth is the Village at Curtis Corner Special Meeting. And your regularly scheduled meeting on Feb, on Tuesday, February twenty-third.
And then also Amy just mentioned, right, and uh ethics training.
Ethics training on six o'clock on the third as well.
Yeah, and, and Maria, do you wanna talk briefly now, not about Curtis Corner specifically, but are there any general questions or general guidance that I can offer um, regarding comp permits, master plan, prelim plan? I, I, avoiding the specific.
Yes.
Application.
Yes. Um, I think um, uh, more of a definition uh relative to the language that says um, the overall concept being approved. Um, yeah, and how that relates to vesting, and then the terms, of course, conceptual.
Yep.
Layout, that's one thing.
I, I'm gonna do my best, but I wanna let you know I'm limited, um, because the statute says what it says. And there is um a real dearth of precedent in Rhode Island interpreting that language. Um, there's really nothing controlling from the Supreme Court, and there's only a few Superior Court decisions that even go into what really is a master plan. Um, you know, there's been a couple decisions in which um an applicant who's been denied alleges that the planning board, you know, held them to a higher standard of proof. So I was reviewing those decisions recently. Um, and I think the Bickie case from twenty twelve, um, that was a decision of the town of um, Smithfield that was appealed to Shab, it was a comp permit. Um, and the um Superior Court reversed Shab's decision. This case deals both with integration and it deals with um engineering issues, and there are a couple lessons from Bickie. Um, one is that it confirms that at the master plan stage, the applicant is not required to provide detailed engineering information, but that if the record shows concerns of an environmental or engineering nature, the applicant does have to suggest a general plan to address those issues. So in that case, um, uh, the evidence on the record showed that connecting um the proposed development sewer system could pose a health and safety hazard to current residents. There was no plan put forth um by the applicant as to, not even a generalized plan as to a possible solution of that sewer issue. So um, the Superior Court found that it was a mistake for Shab to reverse the zoning board's denial of the project on that round. Um, so that stands for the proposition that the planning board, again, at the master plan stage cannot require engineering. You know, y- y- you, you can't um require them to present a full solution to problems that, that are discovered or discussed, but you have to have a generalized plan. On the issue of integration, um, this is an interesting one. You know that the L M I Housing Act requires uh, there's one of the um required findings is that the uh low and moderate income units proposed are integrated, compatible in scale, you've heard me say this before, built and occupied prior to simultaneous with the construction and occupancy of any market rate units. And the verb tense that is used in that requirement is present tense, right? They are integrated, they are compatible. In this case, the zoning board denied a, a, another basis for the zoning board's denial of that project. Um, and, and by the way, in that case, at that time, the zoning board, rather than the planning board, served as the local review board in Smithfield. Um, so the local board denied the project, saying the applicant hasn't presented evidence that this integration requirement has been met. And Shab said, well, the developer said they intend to work with Rhode Island Housing and the town to, to make sure this requirement is met. And the Superior Court said, no, the statute says you need evidence that they are integrated. So um, that I think um, i- is evidence that if, if the um the statute, and in this case, it was the L M I Housing Act, um, states that a requirement must be met, you know, it's not, will it be met down the line, it's, is it met at this stage of review? On the other side of the coin, there is an interesting decision from, I think, twenty fourteen that I, I remember um reviewing at the time, and now with a few more years under my belt, I, I'm able to take a um a little more, more critical look at it. It was the, a Superior Court decision reviewing a um decision of the Hopkinton Planning Board. And this one, I have to say, was really interesting. Um, the um required findings for approval that we all know for, you know, master plan and preliminary plan um, from the statute, and again, now we're back to the regular um Development Review Act, right? Um, Title forty-five, Chapter twenty-three. And it's forty-five, twenty-three, sixty that sets forth the required findings, right? Consistent with the comp plan, con- consistent with the zoning ordinance, no negative environmental impacts. Um, we know those almost by heart at this point. You know, Judge Thunberg found that this statute um, doesn't apply to master plan approval. Now, that is not a controlling decision. Yeah, I know, Maria, I'll, I'll have to send you that case. Um, this decision is not controlling, and I don't think it was appealed, however, so it, it governs that case, but, you know, that's I, I, I would suggest that is erroneous precedent, but I think it shows you, um, it, 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 um, it, now you understand why I explain, you know, I, I'm trying to do my best in explaining what this means, uh, master plan vesting, but I'm, I'm working with a limited body of evidence or body of precedent. So um, I'm just gonna rely on my own understanding of what it means. Master plan vesting, you have to balance the planning board's right to require modifications to the plan if warranted at future stages based upon engineering or environmental details that typically aren't reviewed in detail at this stage. Um, balance that with the developer's right to rely upon certain core aspects of the project being set in stone. Layout and density being key, right? Because that's what really, that's what drives the financing, that's what drives the numbers, right? How many units are you getting out of this project? And of course, it's important for both sides to know where are they gonna go on the site. So layout and density are really the, the key elements to master plan vesting. Um, and, and, you know, I, I'm not gonna repeat again the um statutory definition of master plan vesting. Um, right, um, and, and the definition of master plan. I think we need to just keep in mind, the goal of the master plan stage of review for the board is to ensure that the applicant has put forward sufficient evidence at this time to tick off all those required findings, understanding that they're not required to, to, um, you know, have full uh, not required to have state permits or full engineering details. Um, but the applicant should leave or should proceed from master plan approval with certain things set in stone. So layout and density shouldn't be revisited at the planning, at the preliminary plan stage, barring some, um, I, I would say it would be an unusual circumstance, maybe where engineering details come out that that, um, you know, affect those aspects. I hope that was helpful, but, you know, again, I, I wish I had something more definitive. Maybe in a few years down the line, we'll have some um gospel handed down to us from on high on this question.
Well, you know, what, what you just stated was, was actually what I think we face as the greatest challenge is having sufficient evidence um that will allow us to um say that we approve the master plan based on these findings. Yet there's that particularly on um property with significant constraints. I- it's a little contradictory because if you don't have enough evidence to say, yes, this is going to uh, have no negative environmental impacts, for example. Um, yet you don't have the, the information, say, stormwater, that would allow you to make those findings. That's, I think, the big challenge that we face.
I think that can be resolved in most occasion, in most cases, through conditions of approval that require submission of certain items and permits and, and, and they're required as a matter of law at the next stage. But um, to the extent that our conditions can flag, these are the issues that we're gonna dig in deep. These are the issues that we know um are going to be problematic for this development. They need to be resolved at the preliminary plan stage. I think the planning board reserves the right to, um, to make negative findings on the environmental issues at the subsequent stage based on the evidence or lack thereof that comes out at that prelim stage.
I think we had discussed, in the future, we wanna identify those items so that when the applicant comes back at preliminary, we don't have to ask for them at the first meeting. We say, this is what we expect to have at that first meeting. Again, because of the shortened timetables.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay. Great.
Thank you.
All right, before we close this meeting, uh, I will ask once again, is there anyone in the audience that would uh like to comment on any of the uh discussion we had tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, doesn't look like uh we have any comments, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, I had a motion from Joe, a second from Maria. All of us in favor, raise their hand. It's unanimous. We'll uh see you at Thursday, uh, seven P M. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night.